On Wednesday, October seventh, so that sounds like a good time for a work session for the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners. We want to welcome all of you who have joined us online or anyone there at the courthouse. Typically, our work sessions are provided just to provide information to the Board of County Commissioners and the public. We do not take action on any of these items, and if you have any public comment, we'd ask you to save that to our 5:30 business meeting. With that, I will turn it up for, excuse me, to Sarah Plensky, our county administrator for a discussion of the Treatment and Recovery Campus of Douglas County.
Thank you, Commissioners. We're real excited to bring you this work session today to talk about the incredible progress we're making at the Behavioral Health and Treatment Campus. I want to make sure that all of our friends listening at home know that this is a work session for informational purposes only. We will be making no decisions here today. However, to let the Commission know, we intend to have the guaranteed maximum price and the total project approval for the Crisis and Recovery Center on your agenda next week. So this is really a preview and, and leading up to the, some of the decisions we're going to ask you to make next week. Before Jay, I turn it over to Jay Zemrashid, our Director of Capital Projects, to lead us through this, and I know he could, we have a team of folks from our design and construction team as well as our partners in behavioral health on this call. I want to make sure to be, Jay, do we need to move over Chris and with Marlan? Are there some, I think I saw a couple of folks that might be in the attendee list that Kevin Markley that you might want in on this presentation?
I honestly, I don't know. I think that's a good question for the Marlan folks. We had Chris Nichols and James Allen on there from their side, so if Kevin may very well just be on to kind of listen and, and listen in, so.
We can move them over for now, and then if, you know, if they can just stay on mute, if they don't have anything to add. With this, I'll turn it over to you, Jay, to maybe have you start with introductions of the team.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Actually, I think the way we'll start is, I think we're going to have our Behavioral Health Director, I hope I'm getting all the titles correct here. Bob Tryansky kind of tee this up and start off the discussions, and I'll do some introduction on the design team and the CM on the project. They're going to walk us through progress on Tier Two, Tier Three, where we are to date, when hopefully we will be complete with those projects, budget, and then we'll jump in, and as Sarah mentioned, we'll be giving you some information here on the much anticipated Tier One, which is very much coming into focus even as of just a couple of days ago, so we took bids just a couple of days back, so we're still getting all that put together cleanly for you, but so with that, I will hand it off to Bob, and Bob, I'll let you run with the ball.
Thanks, Jay, and good afternoon, Commissioners, and everyone in the community who's tuning in to watch this. We're really excited about this afternoon for varieties of reasons. We have a lot of progress to share with you this afternoon, and progress that you're going to be able to see. I've been saying for a long time, this is no longer a theoretical exercise, but when you have the visuals and the actual sort of photos that you'll see on the, the progress that's made on the construction of the campus, I think it's, it's, it's really exciting. Want to start off from the beginning with some recognition and thank yous to the facility was work group that has been doing this work for many months, and the folks from Marlan and from Trainer, Trainer in particular, who kind of rose, has risen to the challenge that we threw at them to do, you know, a pretty significant redesign of this facility in Tier One, the Crisis and Recovery Camp Center, from where we were when we started this process about two years ago. This is a, this is a smaller design, it's a more affordable design, but it is also a design that is really going to be able to accommodate kind of a higher level of urgency and care for folks that are struggling with the behavioral health crisis, so that we're able to keep them in the community and deliver more immediate care in, in the Crisis Center to take care of people's needs. Also, just wanted to just give a little note, you know, yesterday morning, this, this, today and tomorrow, we actually have been having some system of care work that's been going on, and Douglas County is hosting this week the first Zero Suicide Academy in the state of Kansas. We've had sixty-four people from fifteen different agencies, including primary care practices throughout the community, our behavioral health partners, Bert Nash, the Health Department, DECA, Heartland, Radac, Housing Authority, sort of focused on a real serious effort to drill down on how we can improve our practices and, and quality measures in our healthcare systems to be able to do a better job at rest recognizing risk of suicidality and to also sort of be able to intervene. So there's a lot of progress, and we are excited to take a look at this this afternoon, and also just want to thank the team from Marlan, from Trainer, our primary partners in the Crisis Center, Behavioral Health Partners, you know, represented by Bert Nash and by LMH. This is really starting to come together, and I think you're going to see it and hear it and be excited about what the team has to share with you this afternoon. So thanks, Jay.
Thank you, Bob. Can everybody see the screen that I think I'm sharing? Okay, good. Well, to, to add on to what Bob said, it's, you know, I've been in architecture about thirty years, working in and around and on buildings, and some of the most amazing things that are coming out of this entire effort is the number of people working together, the synergy to get it and kind of bring it to reality, so really is very exciting to see the whole campus kind of taking shape here, so. With that being said, I do want to go ahead and turn this over to, we have with us today Chris Cunningham from Trainer HL Architects. He's the Design Team Lead, probably the most embedded person in this project. Also with us is our CM, Marlan Construction. I believe that will be Chris Nichols and James Allen, maybe others jumping in there to provide additional information. But with that, we'll start with an update on Tier Two, Tier Three, where we are, and then we'll look briefly at Tier One and the progress to date and what's coming in very short order. So, Chris?
Excellent. Thanks, Jay. I just want to reiterate how exciting it is to be here today in front of you, kind of virtually. You know, this has been, I think, Bob, you said, two years, but it feels like it's been about four years in the making, so you know, it's, it's really thrilling for us to have been involved for so long on this project and to see, you know, what started as just the Crisis Center kind of have this offshoot with the other transitions and housing pieces that weren't ever really part of this initial project. You know, it's, it's, it's awesome to see this stuff coming up out of the ground and know the, the services that they are going to be able to provide to the community and to people who need this, this very important care, so. First, I guess, Walker Douglas, he's on here, he's, he's been a great help through all this, so I want to make sure that he's recognized. He's been a key critical to, to this project as well, so. Jay, next slide. So first, like to just kind of reacquaint you with site, to the left, which is the west, is the new Douglas County Crisis and Recovery Center, which we just got our numbers back on, and you saw that great image on that front page. To the right, we have the Transitions piece, which is a two-story home, it's a group home, and then further to the east, we have the cottages. That's a series of ten small one-bedroom apartments, kind of focused around a central courtyard or quad, if you will. Each one of them has their own little private entrance, private deck, and the, this is for your, your long-term permanent care. Next, so as noted, Transitions, it is being run by Bert Nash, Community Health Center. It's a two-story building, about eighty-five hundred square feet, a group home that, that has onsite support and supervision. The stays are intended to be between thirty and sixty days. You know, as, as I discussed, it was, it's, it's primarily a group home, it has all the amenities of a home. Your living room, it's got a small rec room, you know, a kitchen, dining room, and then it's got the administrative suite where the director can be and the staff. It's, we have twelve beds, they can care for twelve patients, four double occupancy rooms and four single occupancy rooms. Two rooms right now in the office area can be used for crisis observation, so as soon as we get this building built, you know, we have that ability to do twenty-three hour observation. You know, we'll be much better suited to have that when the Crisis Center comes online, and we'll repurpose these rooms, but, you know, it's, it gets us in the door and gives us that immediate ability to serve those patients and heat. Marlan will talk a little bit more about the construction and the timing, but it's looking like we're going to be able to be complete with construction next month. Next slide, Jay. So as you see here, two-story building, you know, we tried to incorporate, you know, residential features so they would blend well with neighborhood, and it's a mix of materials. We've got, you know, indigenous limestone, wood timbers at the front porch and, you know, along the ease. The, the green siding is cementitious siding, so very durable, long-lasting, and then up above the shake shingles, that's cementitious as well, so the windows are fiberglass windows, so very durable, they'll last forever in a day. So, you know, we've tried to take, take kind of a residential structure and, you know, blend it, it's, it's wood, made of wood like a typical house, but we've given it more durable aspects in materials so that it can, you know, serve its purpose and be, you know, it can stand the test of time. So this is, yeah, that's what it looked like a couple of days ago. Moving on to the cottages, this is the, the little ten-bedroom or the ten-unit complex, we've got the three buildings right around the courtyard. Each unit is about six hundred and twenty-five square feet. These units will be run by the Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority. So once a patient comes in here or a person comes in here, they can stay as long as they like. It's, you know, the, the bedrooms or the units are, you know, your typical one-bedroom, have a small living area, kitchen, bedroom, bathroom, and they have their own washer-dryers, which will be provided, and then private patios and entrances, as discussed earlier. All the units are ADA accessible. You know, one of the really cool things that Shannon was able to do was to get a grant, and so we've used some of that money to put photovoltaic panels on it, so we can kind of, we can provide energy and offset our energy usage. Again, looks like we're going to be able to occupy these buildings here in November, December. And here's what they look like. You know, again, kind of same, same mix of materials, limestone, concrete siding, asphalt, shingles, timbers. You know, we, we tried to kind of give each unit a little bit different character, so we've kind of switched around the roof lines and, you know, offset the, the faces of the building a little bit so that they can read a little bit better as individual units changed around siding, again, all cementitious, so that is the cottages. Now, I'd like to hand it over to Marlan to talk a little bit more about the construction.
Appreciate it. James Allen here with me, and we'd like to say thanks for allowing us to be a part of this team and this exciting project. As you've said before, project right now, we have the cottages building. The three buildings are scheduled to be complete early part of November. Right now, they're in the final stages with flooring and finishes being completed. The Tier Two building is scheduled to be turned over in the middle part of November, and that one right now is installing cabinets, countertops, and paint finishes at the moment. In terms of the overall construction cost in the budget, it is right on target where we started at the three point seven million dollar cost. We put a little kind of a two-minute video, a time lapse of where we started and where we're at today. So if Jay wants to run that, so everybody can kind of get a general idea.
Is everyone seeing this? Okay. It's kind of amazing the way decisions made kind of generate and become very real very quickly. Marlan has a camera set out there that is taking a photo, how often, Chris?
I believe it's every thirty minutes.
Every thirty minutes? So you'll see the change of seasons in this, you'll see the snow, the rain, the muck, the good stuff, the bad stuff, it's all in there, but the fact that it's truly progressing and coming along so quickly is, is really very exciting, so. There you see Tier Two going up, the cottages in the back are in lion's share kind of running ahead, but Tier Two is coming along here as we go. Can't say enough about how I think the design team and then the construction group has followed through on it, but they've created what feels very residential, but is very, very durable and commercial in terms of its life. I think, I think it was important to make these spaces feel residential, so people could feel like they were at home here and in a safe place, and I think it's, it's really followed through in, in the volumes and in the materials and so.
I also just want to credit the construction team, the design team, for how, how well and carefully they listened to the subject matter experts, you know, and to consumer sort of input on how, you know, what, what, what type of environment you want to create on the, on the inside, it's been some really remarkable, I think, listening and adjusting and, and, and getting, getting to form and function.
Give me just a second here to switch back over. Hope I'm doing this right and not canceling everything. Yes, okay. So that is kind of progress as it has occurred since we started this endeavor, I think, in October, November of last year, really very exciting. I think at this point, we will kind of not take a ninety-degree turn, but we'll start talking to you a little bit here about Tier One, and kind of then what we see is the completion of the overall treatment recovery campus. And Chris, I'll let you jump back in on this and, and run us through programmatically how we got here and as we go, so.
Okay, awesome. Thanks, Jay. Yeah, the Crisis and Recovery Center, this is, I think, was noted before, it started as a much bigger building, you know, almost double the size, so we've, we've really kind of changed it, you know, through those visits and through the study and all of the, the discussions with the subject matter experts, and, and I think we've, you know, got something that's really great here. It's, it's about a twenty thousand square foot building. You know, the core components, the twenty-three hour stay, we've got sixteen recliners in that room. It's, you know, flanked by all of the support rooms that, you know, go towards that room and the treatment that's being provided. You know, between, between that and the seventy-two hour, which is the other major, I guess, piece of treatment, is a observation area or, I guess, yeah, the ops work area where the staff can view into each the twenty-three and the seventy-two hour for that larger observation duration.
Chris, we just need to make one little bubble here, or bubble here, I have a typo. So the twenty-three hour stay, that's the observation unit, and the seventy-two hour unit is the stabilization unit, so the, the observation happens in the twenty-three hour unit, and then longer-term stabilization services is what happens in that seventy-two.
Okay. Duly noted, so. Yeah, and then I guess the other core components are the lobby component with the voluntary admittance, so that we can, we can treat anybody that, you know, comes to the building who is, you know, seeking treatment. They can come right in, in the front door, be admitted, and then be treated. The other core component is the after-hours admittance. So if, if law enforcement or other means is coming after hours, they can bring a patient into the facility so that they can be treated. We also have, you know, administration area, the training, exam, and consult rooms that just kind of complete all of the core components. We do have a hardened area that is rated for storms. It will, it's in the after-hours area, which I can show you here in a minute, but in, in case of tornado, all the patients and staff have a safe place to go. And then lastly, we've got a really great little outdoor therapy area that both the twenty-three and the seventy-two hour spaces can utilize. And yeah, so I think next slide, Jay, we'll look at the plans real quick. So the teal, I thi, and I think that maybe everybody's seen these plans before, we haven't really changed these significantly since we probably came three, four months ago and showed them to you. It's been, you know, a refinement of details and spaces, but that the teal space that, that has the mouse on it, that is the twenty-three hour unit with that central observation work area in between, and then seventy-two hour stabilization unit that has eight bedrooms off of it. Those can be double occupancy, so we have the ability to have sixteen people in that wing as well. So the, they're down at the bottom of the screen is the entrance right there, so coming into the lobby area, and then the console and training room next to that, just to the left of that and kind of that light blue, that's the administration wing. And then further up to the left, the spaces in red, that box right there, that is the hardened area, but this is the after-hours intake area here. So I won't get into all the details of the gray spaces, you know, we've got kitchens, we've got storage, we've got mechanical, all the things that, you know, make the building tick. But more excitingly, it looks a little bit like, next slide. This, so this is a view from the southwest. It's, you know, again, kind of a mix of materials, stone, lap siding, metal siding, you know, storefront windows, you know, trying to pick up on some of the materials that we used on the transitions and cottages, as well as, you know, trying to give it a little bit of its own distinct flavor so that it's not really confused with, you know, the, the residential components to the, to the east. That is the, so what Jay's got his mouse on over there, that's the after-hours intake canopy, so. Yeah, and so then, so then we've got the front entrance canopy over here, so this, this is where you can come drop off, we go, we'll drop off area, so. That's what she's looking like, and then this is a rendering from the southeast, kind of at grade, looking, you know, at that front entry canopy in the lobby area. And with that, I'll hand it back over to Chris Nichols.
Thanks, Chris. It's pretty scary how close those resemble the actual product when we can look at the Tier Two and Tier Three as examples, and we saw those renderings from the very early part of this presentation, and then as we saw the pictures, it's, it's amazing at how close they resemble each other, so. This project is not yet started, but we do plan to start early November, construction, and be complete with construction in December of 2021. As Chris had mentioned before, we did have bids and everything come back, we've been working diligently to comb through those, and today we are sitting at about eight million dollars, broken down into roughly seven point one million for the building and roughly nine hundred thousand for the site and utility and public infrastructure work that is going to be happening, so. I would like to say congratulations to the entire team involved in this process, it has been many, many months just on our end, and I know that the design team and Bert Nash and many of the other parties have been involved in this for a lot longer, so kudos to you all.
Well, Commissioners, for, for, that, that is the extent of the PowerPoint that we have to present today. I do think that the, the, as Sarah mentioned early on, the kind of overall project budget will be, I, I think, presented to you next week for consideration. And so I think it is good to note that the project is under where we were anticipating it originally, and from SD and DD, we had good bids. Marlan has been working diligently, going back and forth with the design team and the county as well to shake those bids and make sure that we've got good bids, and it's, it's just looking really good in terms of, of dollars, which is, which is refreshing and nice, so. Again, that overall budget is, will be loaded up and into your packets for next week. I think with that, I think it concludes our presentation to you, and this group all would stand for questions. Or Zoom for questions.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris. Commissioners, do you have questions?
Maybe you could take this presentation down so we can see each other's faces.
Okay. I got it? Okay.
Thank you.
So I have one question, and it's, it has nothing to do with the, the design or, or the progress on the housing front. It's, it's all beautiful, and it just, it's kind of stunning to actually see, see what's, what's on the ground. I, it's super exciting. I, this is a question for Patrick, and it's more kind of operational. The, the only thing I noticed that's different than, than what I was expecting was the length of stay at Transitions. I think we always, as I recall, kind of talked about it as a potentially longer length of stay, so folks could, you know, work through all of the, what's necessary to get them onto, you know, federal programs or local assistance, so. Again, this is, it's, this is a little off-topic, I guess, but do you, is there any story behind the kind of shortened stay at Transitions?
Thanks for that question, Nancy. I, I noticed that as well as Chris went through it. My, to be honest with you, I think that was just simply a communication issue. No, there's been no change in the length of time that we anticipate folks staying at Transitions. The, the bridges is, is a more limited program. And so maybe there was some misunderstanding, but yeah, they, they can stay at transitions for a, a much more significant amount of time than, than the 60 days. Really, we've envisioned them being able to stay six months to a, a year if need be. So.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that was just an understanding.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification because that, yeah, that kind of began to take a little bit of a different, yeah, a little bit of a different service that there. So, so then all, the only other thing I have to say is, Chris, you said that this has been two years in the making, but it felt like four. And I would say it seems like it's been four years in the make, maybe like a lifetime. It's just, this has been a remarkable process and I, and it really is heartening to see all of the work and all of the fits and starts and ups and downs that, that have created this campus and moments of incredible inspiration and lots of patience and grace, gesture of grace given, given and taken by all to get us to this point. And I'm just really grateful for, for all of the work on the architectural side and construction side and the BHLC. And it just feels like we're really about to add a, just a tremendous gift to the community that really will make a difference. So I'm super excited to see, see this presentation. I hope the rest of the community, I, I don't know how we'll be able to introduce this to the entire community in a way that folks will kind of see it and know it's real, but this is a good start.
I guess I would just thank Nancy for her leadership throughout this entire process. Thank you. Without you, we would not have been able to do it.
I have a, just a quick question for Jay and for Chris, maybe. I'm always interested in that, you know, we have this large site and the building is a little smaller than originally anticipated. I don't know if there was any discussion at all about expansion ever, or, you know, if that ever crossed anyone's mind or what that might look like or what might be next steps and how you negotiated that on the site. It sounds like I asked about seven questions there and I'm really sorry about that, but you want to talk about maybe just thoughts about that in the future?
Absolutely. And I guess, Jay, if you can pull up that site plan. You know, I, I think that we have tried to accommodate that, you know, as, as best we can. As you'll see, there's, there's a big gap there between the Crisis Center and Transitions building. You know, we've, we've tried to push the, the Crisis and Recovery Center as far to the west as we can so that a, we could either expand, you know, the Crisis Center if needed or potentially add in another building like Transitions that could add even more beds. So, so I think we're set up, you know, for options there. You know, not really knowing what, you know, the future holds and whether, you know, we'll have one need more pressing than the other. I, I think we can accommodate. The plan for the Crisis Center itself, Jay, if you can flip down to that, it's, you know, it's set up with a, with a corridor that runs from east to west. So you know, you can pretty easily imagine that, you know, extending further to the east and then adding a whole nother unit there. You know what that looks like? We don't know, of course, because we don't know what that, that need will be. But you know, in that sense, I think that, you know, we've planned for expansion of both the Crisis Center and, you know, potentially another building onsite. So whichever one comes first, I guess we'll, we'll find out. But that's, I guess, how we've tried to expand or address potential future improvements. Answer your question.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, I certainly hope we don't need it, I guess, would be one thing. But if we do, I just wondered what the planning was around that and thinking about our future here.
Hey Jay, bring your microphone down so we can hear you.
I do think there's some amazing space here too, that was kind of alluded to earlier, which is this outdoor kind of secure courtyard area that individuals can access while in the facility. And it, although it's not, this, it's kind of white here, I think this is going to be a pretty amazing space for, for people to go out and have a, a therapeutic experience with the outdoors. I was trying to get to some of these images. It, it actually occurs kind of on the backside facing the pond area, the park area. And I just think it, I, I think it's going to be pretty amazing. I think you'll see more images as that's, as we get a little further down the road here, but that space that Chris was talking about for expansion obviously is kind of happening right in here, so.
I have one more question. Maybe this is directed towards the BHLC members, but how just remind us how you, this might be used with youth at all, if at all, and, and just how that folds in.
Stephen, do you want to speak to that on the access center piece of this?
Yeah. Hello, this is Stephen O'Neil. I'm the Chief Operations Officer at Burt Nash. The front part of the facility is an access point for community-based services and would be available to children and their families as well as adults. The 23 hour observation and the 72 hour or longer term crisis stabilization unit, those are 18 and over, but we fully envision supporting children of all ages and their families in the front part of this building in the access point, which would include intake to a variety of community resources, whether that's behavioral health, substance abuse, healthcare, those types of connections. We may assess children for hospitalization and facilitate that. While we won't be able to provide more acute level care, we would facilitate that and we would keep the child and family safe until that resource connection could be made. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, it does. I, I just, I know we've talked about it before. I just wanted, now that we're looking at the plans again, I wanted you to sort of remind me and, and it's something I think that's just a huge need in our community and I'm worried is increasing.
I would, I would very much agree, sir.
That may have been part of my question about expansion as well, but I don't want to give any spoiler alerts there.
I think what's important to, to remember is that you cannot put children and adults in the same type of facility or, or the same facility. So if we did expansion onto that, we'd have to be extremely careful how, if it was a children's unit, how they would be completely separate from that. It, it might actually be better to consider some other site for that if we were ever to get to that route.
Thanks, Patrick. That's helpful. Commissioners, any other questions? Well, thank you very much. We are very much looking forward to next week or, yeah, next week's presentation, budget presentation. Really, I, I think want to express our appreciation to the entire BHLC, the design team, the construction team. I'm sure, I'm sure every project runs just as smoothly as this. So thank you very, very much for all your work and partnership together. And if there's nothing else, we will adjourn until our 5:30 business meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you all for this time.